And we are recording.
That's great. So I have in Quorum and being six thirty on February third, two thousand and twenty one, I'll open the Bridgewater Planning Board. Prior to opening any public. Meetings or hearings, I'll read the governor's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law Thirty A, Section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order imposing a strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded and within the forty-eight hours, we will post a link of the recording on the town's website and/or other social media pages. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be participating remotely. Patrick Criscoll, it's myself, the chair, Mr. Raymond Ajemian, the vice chair, Mrs. Jean Garino, the clerk, Mr. Michael McDonald, Mr. Stephen Geller, and our associate member, Astrid Rojas. During the meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as roll call votes. The Bridgewater, the following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating with us remotely. Mr. Elijah Romulus, the assistant town planner, Mrs. Leslie Doer, the office administrator, and Mr. Azu Entenaro is not here, but we anticipate he'll be joining us. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mic will be unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project representative mics will be unmuted. If a project is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we ask to use the chat feature. The chat will go to the host, which is Mr. Romulus, and then he'll notify us of the of the question or ask the person to speak to him in public comment. And we ask you to list your name and address and your question in your chat. The host will recognize the questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu, and you'll be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. So the first item on our agenda is a public hearing for number fourteen, Summer Street, which is DA Bar LLC. It's a major site plan. This is a renovation and expansion of a mixed-use building to include a restaurant on the first floor and apartments above. That being said, we received some correspondence from assistant town planner, Mr. Romulus. We received some comments from apartments, and we received some engineering comments from Mr. Entenaro. So if everybody's okay, I'll turn it over to the applicant for their presentation. You can then ask board questions and open up to the public. So Mr. Romulus, if Mr. Silver or the applicant's representatives would like to begin, that's fine.
Yes, I see the applicants are here, so I can, if you're ready to present, please go ahead.
I can't, I'm not really fully connected here. Is there another setting up? I can't see anyone. I can't see anything. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I can't see any of you, but I assume you're there.
Do you want to sign off and log back on again? We'll wait for you.
Yeah, I think I think I should do that if I can.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we also have minutes if you want to go through with that in the meantime.
And those are the ones that you sent out maybe yesterday or today, I believe.
Monday.
All right, so we have two sets of minutes. If the board would like to take these while we're waiting for Mr. Silver.
I did read them, and there were only a couple of spelling errors and a extra sentence in one of, a duplicate sentence in one of them, and I did send less an email this afternoon. I don't know whether she's seen it.
Those corrections on Monday.
Some more script errors, Jean, that we don't need to vote on.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes of one, six, twenty-one, and one, twenty, twenty-one?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of one, six, and one, twenty, twenty, twenty-one.
Do we have a second after Jean? Hi, Mr. Geller. Do we have any discussion other than Jean's scribness errors? So I'll take the roll call vote. Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Garino?
Yes.
Mr. Ajemian?
Yes.
And I'm E.S., so five and zero, five in favor, zero against. And then we'll just wait for.
Yeah, I'm not having a lot of success there.
Larry, we can see you.
I know, but I can't even log up and log in because I'm not getting any of the. I can, all I can see is the preview screen.
Oh. What, are you on the, can you see the preview screen with the plan?
No.
Oh, you can't see any of that.
All I see is my picture as a preview, and it says join with video. I try to do that, it won't do it. It says waiting, and the thing keeps spinning saying waiting.
So perhaps, can you, Larry, can you do it with just the plan in front of you or no?
Well, we can try that, and I got Rebecca is also on, so we can, we can do that. So we want to stop?
Sure.
All right, you said something about some correspondence. You don't want to read the correspondence first. You want to go right to the presentation.
The only, I believe the only correspondence we received, Mr. Romulus, we didn't receive any public letters, correct, in favor or against?
That's correct.
Correct. So the only correspondence we really received that we'd read into the record would be Mr. Entenaro's report?
Mr. Entenaro's report.
Who's Mr. Entenaro?
He's the town engineer.
Okay.
So, and that was provided to you already, Mr. Silver?
Yes, and we, we've also, so Elijah, you did not receive a letter from us?
We did.
We did.
We just emailed, we just got it, I believe.
Yes, I got it this afternoon.
All right, so let me stop by. I'll give a presentation first, and then we can get into those questions that came out from Azu and others. So the property that we're talking about is fourteen Summer Street. Fourteen Summer Street, a lot of people maybe remember it as being Bogots, and it's had, I don't know what other names it's had in history. It was probably started in as just a residential structure way back in early Bridgewater days, but it's been commercial and residential for as long as I've been in Bridgewater, and that's over forty years. So what, where it is, is it's right in the center of town, just off the common, near the Plaza, near the Walgreens Plaza, and near the the small, the small sandwich place that used to be the insurance company near, near the bank. So that's where we're, we're talking about, and to the right of it is the the former Baptist Church. I'm not sure if that's, they're still called that, but that's, that's immediately to the right. And to the rear of the property is Latham Terrace. There are a couple of houses that are on that side. But primarily to the left, it's all commercial, across the street, it's commercial, to the right, the church, and, like I say, a couple of houses to the rear. So the renovation that, so let's start with what it presently is configured. It's configured now so that the building sits to the far right of the lot, which is, the assessors have it at eighteen thousand square feet. Our survey came in a little bit shy of that, like seventeen thousand or so square feet. The building sits to the right side of the parcel itself, and there is a couple, a little bit of parking in the front, and there is parking on the left side, and also to the rear of the site. The building was, was historically served with, with town water and with an onsite septic system. But there have been upgrades that have been made to the building in order to increase the fire, the water line to take care of fire service. And also, a new sewer line was brought in in order to take it off the septic system that was located to the rear of the building. That also allowed for us to consider how to best utilize that area where the septic system had been located in the, in the parking lot to the rear. And that was then targeted to be a place for some of the improvements that we're proposing. So the existing building had a restaurant with an occupancy capacity of two hundred, and it had two apartments above. And the proposed renovations will reduce the size of the, the restaurant portion to a hundred-seat restaurant, so that's cutting that in half. I think it was already envisioned to do a smaller venue, but then when COVID hit, it just seemed to be more fitting to stay with that scenario. And the above there was increased in, in residential units to five residential units above. So what happens in terms of what's being proposed is the footprint is basically the same. The only additions are, to the rear, there's a small bump out for egress in order to create a stairway that meets the codes. And there is also proposed to have a patio in the front for outside dining, which is, like, in COVID times, it's sort of an essential to want to have. The parking in, in the rear is made a little bit more formal, as you can see in the site plan, I can't see, but you can see. In the site plan that we've, we've utilized the center area of that back parking lot for some leaching. And we have, we had proposed, but during the initial work that was being done there, the wall was actually constructed under a permit given by the building department. So there's a wall that was put in on the right side and to the rear, a budding Latham Terrace. That wall allowed for there to be a love, more of a leveling out of the surface elevation in the back. And also, it helped solidify a separation from the commercial use in this building and the residential use on Latham Terrace. So there would be no temptation or any future kind of connection over to Latham Terrace. The owners of the property wanted to provide for a, a good transition to the existing neighborhood behind there. The number of parking spaces that would have been dictated by the previous use was in excess of, let's see, there was, I think there was additional additional spit, well, the two hundred units would have had it about fifty spaces for the restaurant, and then there would have been ones for the apartments above. So I believe that there was, I'm looking for the notes in our, in our letter here. Okay, so the parking that's provided is a reduction from the fifty-two spaces that were needed to support the former restaurant. And there are twenty-two proposed spaces that are on-site, and we're going down to thirty-two total under this scenario. So there are ten parking spaces that will be absorbed by available parking in the central business district. But we're taking care of a majority of it on-site, which is so much unlike the, a lot of the businesses that are in the downtown area that, that depends solely on what available public parking, you know, is on the common itself. So from that point of view, that has been a big improvement, and it's actually a lesser impact on the, on the neighborhood for the proposed renovation than the previous use of the site itself. I think that there were a number of the comments that were, that we were aware of that came from Azu, and there were a few others that were sent over from Elijah and so forth, that we've addressed those in a letter that has today's date on it, and it identifies answers to the questions that were raised by Azu about the stormwater system that's in the back to handle roof recharge. And in so, we're going to add a detail that shows that there is an overflow from the roof drains that in the event that the roof drain chambers cannot handle the flow, that it will then discharge to ground level in those situations. There was a, and I'm referring to that letter here in terms of the questions that were raised. So that was the answer to the first one. The second one was that there was a a question about the soils supporting the recharge system, and we're going to add a note to the what we would ask would be a condition of approval plan that would specify the requirements that were outlined by Azu. The third question had to do with the volume of runoff for all storm events is slightly higher than that for the current condition. We'd suggest to you that that's, I guess we can't meet the ninety percent reduction, but that we, this is a a redevelopment of a property, and so we're trying to do everything we can to the extent possible. And I, and I feel as though that it's a minimal difference from, from the standards for new sites that are from the ground up. The next one had to do with the a question about groundwater mounding, and whether or not the positioning of the chambers would, in fact, not fall into a situation where there would be a mounding that would impact the available volume. We have shown that there's a two-foot separation from groundwater to the bottom of the chambers. We will provide groundwater mounding calculations to show that there isn't an impact, or if need be, we will adjust the elevations of the actual chambers in order to bring them up to accommodate the the potential for groundwater mounding. The, the next question that was asked was about was about lighting and whether or not it's going to cast any glare on, on, on other properties. And there is a note on the plan, which is holding to the standard that they must be equipped with a prismatic lens to reduce glare and to a maximum cutoff of seventy degrees from the vertical. There were also some additional comments that we had received outside of the ones from Azu. One had to do with a question about building height, and we consulted with the architect who indicated that the new roof height is six foot, two inches higher than the highest roof that is remaining at the front portion of the building. The architect will, will provide required documentation to demonstrate that the height does not exceed the forty-five-foot limit. It was nowhere close to that, but he'll be able to show that when he makes the application.
Larry, can I ask you and Elijah both a question on this? So so I know this isn't a special permit, it's just a site plan, but we're kind of blurting the lines with some stuff that I think we're asking for and that you're asking for. So in the central business district, without a special permit, the height is only allowed at forty feet. Is that correct, Mr. Romulus? I think you're still going to be below it, but I think, so if we're not doing the special permit, then I think the height has to be forty, isn't that correct?
Let me verify that for you.
But it's, but it's funny because we're asking something for something that are in the special permit, and they're asking, you know, so it's, I know it's not a special permit, but it's mixed use. We just, so it just, I just want to make a note of that, that we might get into trouble if it's over forty feet without a special permit, because I think the special permit granting authority is allowed to give up to forty-five feet for mixed use, right?
Yes.
So I, I think it's going to be below forty anyway, don't, don't you, Mr. Silver?
I don't think that we're, I don't think we're approaching the forty limit. Rebecca, do you have a comment on that?
Oh, when I looked at it briefly this afternoon, we were closer to like maybe a thirty-six.
Good, yeah.
So I would say to you, in your findings, if you were to put a stipulation that the that the roof cannot exceed forty feet without a special permit approval or something to that effect, it would cover you in that regard. The park, the next question had to do with parking, and I did answer that, but it was asking about that there are, how many parking spaces were required, and as I answered, that we're providing thirty-two. Is thirty-two is required, and twenty-two of them will be on-site. And that's, like I say, a reduction from the original requirement of fifty-two, which most of those were offsite. And I know that there was a lot of foot traffic before, but even so, I mean, only having to do ten offsite, there's a number of locations nearby that can accommodate that ten very easily.
Just while you're unpacking, do you mind if I ask another question?
Sure.
So just, just to square away the parking, by reducing the restaurant capacity by half, you're making the parking situation much better. So Mr. Romulus, again, outside the special permit criteria, we would require two parking spaces for each residential unit plus the restaurant parking, correct? Because it's not, it's only one space for every unit in the special permit criteria, but I just want to be clear, we're making the parking situation a lot better. It's, it's less of a zoning infraction, right? Because, and that's what we could argue, that, that it's less of a zoning infraction because the resident, because the restaurant capacity got cut in half. So essentially, they're making it better.
That's non-conforming.
Right, less non-conforming.
Yes, so it's less non-conforming for the parking.
May I ask a question? I noticed that you have a few parking spaces that you're going to use snow for snow storage?
Yes. And the reality is that sometimes when that happens, you might have less capacity at that point. And if you're deficient enough, you're either going to take the snow and move it offsite and find a place to be able to take it somewhere, or you're, it's going to impact your ability to, to accommodate full capacity of the parking lot. Now, just keep in mind, in this area, we've got businesses that are adjacent to this location that don't provide any off-street parking. Case in point is that the, the juice mill, Juice Mill went into what used to be a glass store. They're operating a restaurant in there. They don't have a single parking space, and it didn't even come before you for site plan approval either. So I think that we've done quite a bit in order to be able to do the best that we can with a historic site, one that we don't really have lots of flexibility with.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. General?
A couple of things. One, maybe I missed it, but in what the material that I looked at, I didn't see anything about referring to height. Maybe it's time to read comments into the record. And also, the, the building itself, I, I just, I've just seen one drawing of the building, and it's like, I'd like to see what the building is going to look like finished in terms of color and everything about it. I think it's worth, since it is in central business district, I think we need to get a good idea what we're approving in terms of the looks of the building.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like someone has their hand up.
Yeah, probably, we'll, we'll, we'll do.
It's the applicant.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, so as far as.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, I just, I don't think most of this.
Cynthia Dantswitz, one twenty-one Green Bar Lane in Bridgewater, where the applicants, the bar. So as far as the color schematics, we are really open to what is suitable for that area. I mean, we'd like to have the neutral tones that's going on in that area. We were thinking of like a, you know, a grayish, bluish color, but if there's something more specific that the town would like to see, we're amicable to that.
If I may, again, Chairman, I mean, that's, that's, that's fine. I just like to see what the bill, if what changes are going to look like in terms, once it's finished, what the building's going to look like, that's all.
Well, I think that that's a picture there.
Excuse me. The main thing, though, I like, if, if I miss some comments, I like them read into the record, please, that's all.
Mr. Romulus, do you mind putting up first your questions to Mr. Silver, if you could? Why don't you put up Mr. Silver's response letter, because I think that incorporates both Mr. Entenaro's comments and your comments, correct?
Correct.
So if we could blow that up, and this is really all the correspondence we've, we got on the project, so. So then Mr. Entenaro is still not with us, is that correct?
He is with us.
All right. Hey, Azu. All right, so.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, good evening.
All right, so, so we're going to go, Mr. Ajemian asked, will we walk through the comments? Maybe Mr. Ajemian, if we walk through the comments and have Mr. Entenaro respond to SCA responses, would that be helpful?
Yes, but as I said before, I, there was a reference to the comment about the height.
And that's, that's, that's in this letter as well. That's, I think, the second half of this letter, I believe.
All right, yes.
So, so the first, the first town engineer comment from Mr. Entenaro was the proposed stormwater recharge system is not furnished with an emergency overflow provision. Mr. Silver, do you want to respond to that, and then we can have Mr. Entenaro weigh in?
Well, what I had indicated was that we were going to provide a detail that shows that the roof drains themselves would have that type of an overflow so that when the recharge system cannot handle the flow, that it would then discharge to the surface.
Mr. Entenaro?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if they can provide a detail to that effect, then that would be satisfactory, but we would like to see that detail and how that works. So what would be your recharge system? Because the potential, just so you know, potentially, I, I always think that a new emergency overflow should be provided at the level that the system is functioning at. In other words, in a, via like a catch basin grate, so it will bubble out. Otherwise, because you've got a roof drain with a lot of pressure coming from the roof, that might, if the pavement is not constructed properly, that might cause the pavement to heave before it actually backs up through the system and overflow from the, so I'd like to see that detail.
So I'm, I'm a little confused, so. Mr. Mr. Silver is proposing that the roof drains will have an overflow, but are you asking for, for something for the infiltration bed? Silver is proposing that the roof drains will have an overflow, but are you asking for, for something for the infiltration bed?
Yeah, but I have, but my point is, I haven't seen that, uh, what is being proposed, to see if it, it will, if it will work. So if, if, if what is proposed would work, then I will say, yes, it will work, but I can't tell you that something would work without seeing it.
Well, in addition to what I'm saying about the roof trains, the, the, the catch basin would provide for a bubbling up and a flow to the east, which is where the existing ditch is now, where flow uh heads down towards uh, it's sort of in the direction of Hale Street, off the edge of uh, Latham Terrace. So yeah, it, there is also some flow that may come out of one of the catch basins when it can't find its way through into the infiltrators as well. We'll be clear about it in the uh, and on the plan.
Yeah, that's right.
Just a, just a second, um, just um, in terms of uh, this conversation, if you do have questions on the applicant's side, just direct them to the chairman and then he can um, let you kind of go ahead.
Okay, and I, I saw Mr. Dankwitz's hand up, so go ahead.
So, I just have a question. The building has been there for multiple years. Has there been an ongoing issue? I mean, I, I mean, we're not reinventing the wheel here. We are reconfiguring a building. The water has always been there, Azu. Hi, Azu, how are you?
Good, Jenny, how are you?
Oh, good. So, so tell me in detail, is anybody complaining on what's there now? I mean, like, we're, we're what more do you want that hasn't already been constructed for the past thirty years it's been there?
Uh, for status, you are, you are talking about redevelopment, redeveloping a site, Mr. Chairman, through you. And it's not totally a redevelopment, because you also have a size of a good amount of an area that is currently not in progress, but that's not in previous, that you are now.
I'm sorry.
You do have a mixed use, it's not one hundred percent a redevelopment. You also have an area that is currently not our, about two minutes concrete surface that is now being converted to an impervious surface. So that will create more runoff.
We did do test pits, Azu.
Right, so that is why you're doing the recharge. And if that recharge doesn't work, you need an, an area for that to bubble and, and so that that recharge system, if you don't have an emergency overflow provision, then that recharge system will heave and cause that pavement to break up.
Okay, so can I ask you a question? And um, I'm certainly just trying to figure this out. If I intend on just utilizing the parking lot as is without putting down pavement, which will save me a lot of money, y- you wouldn't ask for anything extra?
No, no, I can't say that, but we are looking, that we are not here to design the project or redesign the project on the fly at the public here.
No, I, I understand that.
Let me finish, please. We have reviewed an application that was submitted and made comments. Your engineer has indicated that he will be able to address those, and then we said, provide us the detail of what you, how you propose to address that, so we can review it. That's it.
No, I, I understand that, Azu, but I'm thinking along the lines of realism and if I go ahead and pave that, you're going to ask for all this special attention, which I totally understand. However, if we leave it the way it is, I, I, I'm just trying to understand what you're saying. If we leave it the way it is, it's grandfathered in and it's acceptable. If we improve it, we have to prove that it's not gonna do, i- it's not gonna be better than what it is.
It's also an expansion of the use, so. We're, we're also expanding the residential side of the, the building.
Yeah, but we're also decreasing substantially the restaurant size. I'm not looking for a college town potty central. I'm looking for a, a nice place for people to go. So I'm decreasing the restaurant capacity by a hundred. And I'm increasing the residential, which we desperately need by a short amount. So what does that change?
So I got, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, I think, of course, that is a conversation you should be having with your engineer.
And that, I understand that, Azu, but we're in a meeting and we're looking for certain things. And if I mean, if, uh, honestly, if we just left the building as is, it's already a restaurant, we could continue to do what's there anyway. And I think that the town would be less privileged to what it's going to be.
But I, I, I guess I'm confused because the, the, I think we're, we're okay with most of the stuff, Mr. Antonero. You just wanna see this emergency overflow added, correct?
Exactly. So I mean, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's trying to make an argument. I think, without due respect, Mrs. Danson.
I know.
You're making an argument that is irrelevant, and that's not necessary.
All right, so the next, if, if we can move on, the next one is the proposed stormwater recharge system is located with the Institute of Stoils Horizon that is not uh, conducive for stormwater recharge. A specification for the removal of the unsuitable material within the recharge system from elevation ninety point five down to elevation eighty-six point two and replacement cream with clean pervious oils free of contaminants and other delirious materials should be added on the construction detail sheet. So that looks like that's just gonna be added, correct, Mr. Silver?
Yes, for clarification.
Um, Mr. Romulus, I'm, I'm trying to use my mouse and can't figure out why it isn't working. The volume of runoff for the stormwater events under the post-development, under the post-development conditions are slightly higher than the corresponding volumes of runoff under the existing conditions at the ninety percent level. Um, Mr. Silver, you addressed this earlier, but just while we have Mr. Antonero here, can we make sure we're on the same page?
No, I heard, I heard, I was actually, I, I listened to his presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and uh, I believe I pointed out that, that there, there is a deficiency of uh, regarding the, uh, post-development runoff. But I also, I made, I made a point to bring it to your attention. But I also do believe that what Mr. Silver said, because it's a redevelopment and the increase is the minimums, I've done a hair, I have to bring that up to your attention, but I have no problem with it.
Okay. So, uh, the bottom of the stormwater recharge system is only two feet above the seasonal high groundwater level. The applicant needs to provide groundwater mounding calculation to demonstrate that the recharge system would not be surcharged. Mr. Silver?
I indicated that we will provide those calculations and it will either say that we're fine where it's at or that we have to adjust the level of the, the chambers in order to provide additional separation.
Okay.
Either way, we'll comply uh, with the, uh, with the groundwater mounding uh, calculation.
Comment number five, town engineer. Information should be provided to verify the proposed lighting will not cast a glare onto the abutting lands.
Yeah, well, we indicated, yeah. We indicated that we would add it with, be equipped with chromatic lenses to reduce glare and a maximum cutoff of seventy degrees from vertical.
So I just have a question, um, a question on this, and again, we're blurring lines between special permit and site plan. But I think your site plan proposes twenty-foot-high poles um, and
That's right.
and uh, seventy cutoffs. I think in the mixed use, we try to have, I think it says uh, fifteen and ninety. Is there a big difference there, Mr. Silver? Is that something that could be achieved if we wanted that?
As long as my client is fine with that, I don't see any real uh, issue with uh, coming down to the fifteen and achieving that, the ninety.
So the lights just wouldn't be as high, it'd be fifteen feet high instead of twenty.
Instead of twenty.
The, the, the lighting will be not directed towards the the tenants or the landowners in the back. And if there is an issue, it'll be modified.
Cor- correct, and I, I know we, that he does have those two poles indicated.
You're a master electrician, I wanna know that.
Yep, okay. Yep.
But is there, so I get, I guess my question is just not knowing, is there a benefit to them being twenty versus fifteen?
It's gonna, it's not gonna be directed towards.
Um, I think it's, it's quality of pole in adversity of fifteen feet versus twenty feet, it's five feet, they will totally where so you don't know us, we're gonna put in the best quality possible.
Oh, no, and I'm, I'm not saying, it's just.
So the twenty-foot poles are, are more sturdy and quality-driven than the fifteen-foot. My husband's a master electrician. And they will be, you know, if you want us to put in fifteen, that's fine. I just don't wanna take the, the chance of plowing or anything for things to break down or whatever. The twenty-foot poles are stronger.
And, and I'm not saying I want one or the other, it's just a criteria for mixed use, we say poles shall not be more than fifteen feet in height. That's why I'm asking, that's all.
Okay, okay. So if you require fifteen, we'll go for fifteen? We would prefer twenty.
Well, that's, that's why I'm saying, uh, Mr. Romulus, we're blurring the lines because it's not a special permit, so.
Exactly. This whole thing is a blur of the lines.
So you know, do we?
We'll do fifteen, we'll do fifteen.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, so after, so I'm not sure where this um meeting, this, you know, is going, but um once this meeting is through, depending on what the board uh, kind of decides, I can go back with all these comments to our um, you know, staff and zoning enforcement officer to make sure that all of these are addressed.
All right, I just, it's just, it's just what we require in the, in the mixed use section. But this is.
Fifteen.
But this is, this is, this is under the um.
So it's required fifteen in the mixed use, correct?
Correct, fifty, it says fifteen feet, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, next question, Mr. Um, Romulus, so these are your questions.
Excuse me, one more question?
Sure.
Required fifteen or more, or required fifteen max?
In the mixed use, not the site plan, we say light shall not exceed fifteen feet in height and have ninety cutoffs.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not saying that we can make you do that, I'm asking the question because I don't know.
No, I understand, and I.
I don't, I don't know anything about lighting. You know, if, if we could have saved money and made it look better and everything, and you were just doing twenty because you were doing twenty? I'm just trying to understand it, because in, in our mixed use, for some reason, we require that. I don't know if it's better, more attractive.
No, I understand that, and I just wanna make sure I understand. So I can let my, my people know if it's fifteen or fifteen or more, or just fifteen. And if it's fifteen, I can see if I get a sturdy a pole at fifteen.
Correct.
If I may interject, just uh, going forward, I hear some additional comments on the applicant's side. Because this is a public meeting, you would have to state your name and make it a, a public comment. I see that there's multiple people.
Okay, thank you, yep.
All right, so we have assistant town plan a comment one. Items need to be addressed per Azu's review, that's all set. Building height, I think we went over this, the architectural plans do not properly indicate the building height. You'll be increasing the height, staying the same. Again, it's not a special permit, so we have to stay at the, the, the forty, I believe. Um, and that, um, not the forty-five. Parking, there will be thirty-two parking spaces required and twenty-two provided, this will need to be addressed, we discussed that um, already, if anybody wants to talk about that some more.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, is it, is it really thirty-two or is it thirty-five? If you have a restaurant of a hundred people, it's twenty-five spaces, one for every floor, and then if there's five apartments, that's another ten.
Right, so if we weren't using a special permit, it would be thirty-five, but like, so we have to, I mean, I think there has to be some flexibility on both sides because we're both pulling from different things, we're not making.
I agree, I just wanna clarify, that's all.
So if I were to answer that question, I would have to say, because it's not a special permit, it would be thirty-five. And I'd also say that they could probably have the twenty-foot pole, so I mean, that, I, I, like, so I, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
Fencing a greenery along the rear half of the lot. Um, Mr. Silva on that one, said um.
Uh, we, uh, what we show on the site plan is two planting areas to the rear of, of the parking area, um that's adjacent to the, the retaining wall there. So I guess I'm not sure what you are trying to um, what, what the goal would be as far as how those are going to be landscaped, that we were not being very specific about uh, what would be placed there, uh, but those are the two areas that are, are available for us. There's not a lot available on this site, um. Cause you're either giving up uh, parking or you're um, providing for green space.
So, did, did you, did, Mr. Romulus and Mr. Silver, did we get a calculation of lot coverage? Pre and lot cover, post, post-development?
Uh, I did pro- uh, propose a question on lot coverage, I believe they answered it, uh, uh, I think it's like ten percent or something of that nature.
Well, what is it? Because we can't go over eighty, right? Unless they're already over eighty?
Already over eighty, we're ninety now.
Yeah.
We're ninety now.
We're still gonna be ninety.
Okay, so it's not, so we're not, so, so there's already, there's already a zoning.
The non-conformance to today's lot coverage.
Okay.
But we're not making it more non-conforming, where we, all we're doing is, we're changing it from gravel to pavement, but in the way that the calculation is made, it's still the same.
Okay, do we agree with that, Mr. Antonero and Mr. Romulus?
As it relates to parking lot coverage, um, we just have to verify that, um, as long as it stays and doesn't increase the non-conformity of them, that's fine.
Any board questions on that? No? Um, so on the, on the, on the fencing of greenery, the, the only question I had looking at the, the site plan, the elevation that retaining wall, and then there's a so if you pull, pull into the building and then take a right and you pack along that along that wall there, I can't read, um, there's an address there, is, is there gonna be a a lot of glare, a lot of headlights going into that individual's home, either there or in the back? Sure, Mr. Dankwitz?
Which, so as you pull into the property to the right?
So right there, so that wall is elevated, what's?
So that property currently is a parking lot, I believe, which goes to the Baptist church. Is that the, I'm just trying to look at this.
He's talking about the area adjacent to, to Latham Terrace.
Okay, so yes, that property, we've already discussed with the property owners, and actually, they've been very, um very accommodating as far as, um, when we put up the wall, they were very happy, we pulled back the trees, they were even more happy. Uh, we've indicated that the lighting will be going back towards the building. Um, they've contacted us for different various things and everything's worked out fine. Yeah, he's talking about headlights. We're talking about possibly, if there is an issue, because it is higher, it goes to their second floor and not their first floor. So if the headlights come in, it's going to the second floor, not the first floor. If there is an issue, we would put up a fence. But.
So I'm confused, just for clarification, is that a house or is that a parking lot?
I'm just trying to look on the, i- if it's on Latham Terrace and I'm looking at the plan. I'm looking specifically at the plan that you have on.
Mr. Romulus, can you blow up that area along the retaining wall?
So I can see it.
The back portion is the house.
So back portion is Clyde and Edna Myers, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so they have been the ones that are actually super excited that we've in, we've improved the property. Put the wall around it and created it, so now they're not getting flow from our property. And we've indicated to them that we quite possibly could be putting up a fence and they were fine with that. Are we going to, we're not sure, it's going to be a trial and error, if they ask us, it's going up.
Mr. Romulus and Mr. Antonero, any idea how, I mean, if?
So, the reason I asked for the fence or the greenery was specifically, you know, to address your concern, Mr. Chairman, of some type of buffer between the applicant and residential spaces, so if that is a potential risk, I would suggest, you know, perhaps some type of shrub, or, I mean, if it's a wall, then you can't do that, but you know, like a fence, or, you know, it, something to be able to block headlights from going into residences.
Okay, so I would, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I would say right now, if you pull in there, whatever lighting that goes in there would not hit their first floor, because the wall is already up. It could potentially hit their second floor. We're going to, we've already talked about doing a fencing around the whole circumference of the property anyway. So if it's something that's required, we'll go ahead and do it. It's not something that we haven't discussed, I mean, obviously, we want our neighbors to be our friends.
So, and then in the back of that, Mr. Romulus, where it shows Latham Terrace, is that is that a road or is that, that shows a public layout, is there any issues with glare, there's no cars parking that way, but you'd want the fence to continue along that wall, is that what you're recommending?
Uh, yeah, that's what I was recommending, the back.
I don't really see the benefit on the Latham Terrace side.
No, I don't either.
No.
I see, I see some benefit on the, on the right side for the one, two, three, four, for the four spaces, the last four spaces. Because there is a fence, there is a fence on the church property, so where that, sort of from where you start on the Two Latham Terrace, I would say along that stretch, maybe that's where the fence should be.
And on the back side, that's kind of vacant land back there, so it's not like there's, it's a street, it's a street. And there's not a home directly across from it at all.
Fair enough.
And honestly, nobody parks there unless it's the people on that street, I would assume.
We have no, and we have no parking that's facing there.
Yep.
We, you turn into a parking space.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's no parking directly against that.
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Romulus, do you want to go back to the, are we done with the board, town and engineer comments? Light lighting? And like I, like I said, it's in a mixed use, I don't know if twenty feet or fifteen feet is better, I don't know if seventy or ninety is better, I don't even know what seventy or ninety means, it's just I, I think we require in the mixed use ordinance, which we're not operating under fifteen and ninety, so. Okay.
So I believe we've addressed Mr. Jemian, Mr. Jemian's concerns for reading things into the public record.
Right, and this is all we received, and your comments and everything, all right. So we can go back to the site plan. So could I ask the board for any questions that they have, if they have any that they want to ask now, if not, we can open up to see if there's any public comment?
Yes, so there have not been any public comments on the chat. And I do not think that there is anyone that's used the raise my hand feature either.
So, just, Mr. Jimmy brought up a point about the exterior colors and stuff, just, I have another, my last question about the building and the site, really. So it appears that in the architecturals, there's some wood stangs, the detail, the trim is gonna be staying and restored and painted. PVC trim is being added, is that all correct?
Are you talking about the exterior?
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
And then, is that vinyl siding or is that hardy plank, or, you know, what is, what is?
I think that what we're planning, we were initially talking about hardy plank, but I think honestly, I, I think it's gonna be vinyl from top to bottom. I think it'll look more fresh, more clean, it'll be more, you know, last a lot longer, obviously.
Is there any, and I don't, again, this is like the lights, it's it's in our mixed use criteria, but we ask for like natural materials, like hardy plank, wood siding, things like that in the mixed use now?
Okay, so so hardy plank, so you, are you talking?
Again, again, it's, and this, this is where I said, Mr. Romulus, like, we're just, we, we we gave him a, you know, we skipped the special permit.
Right.
Determined we didn't need it, we went right to site plan, but
Right.
We're both asking for things that are in the special permit criteria, so I guess I'm just asking, is that something that you'd be open to if we did all hardy plank?
You know, I mean, our house is hardy plank, it's absolutely doable, obviously, it's much more expensive, I'm spending a lot of money to rebuild this building and make it look awesome for the town, and if you've gone by any of our properties, every one of our properties looks better.
And it's not gonna be a cheap.
And it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be like a vinyl siding that you see regular, it's gonna be more like a vinyl that's designed, that looks like maybe a Kate Wood style, even like CVS, we were trying to mimic the look that CVS has. So, I mean, would I be amicable to it, yes, would I love to do it vinyl to keep it cost effective? Yes, will it look the same pretty darn close?
Just a question.
Yeah, no, I hope that answers your question.
Any board questions? Mr. Jemian, Mr. Geller, Mrs. Guarino, Mr. McDonald, Ms. Rojas?
Um, just a question about, it doesn't fall in the historical district, does it? I'm trying to picture where the signs are.
No.
I have not looked into that, I can.
I do not believe it does, the building across the street where my original office was, above Chessman's, that, that one is, I think that's the limit of the district.
I actually reviewed it. I actually reviewed it when we did buy it, and it did not show it in the historic district. Across the street is, CVS is, all of those are, but this is right outside of it, I mean, again.
I know, we have a small historical district, so.
Yeah, yes. And, and, and honestly, I live in the town, I've lived in the town for twenty-five years. We took a leap of faith and bought this building. And it's a dump. It's a dump, we went in there and gutted that whole entire building out to the studs. I can tell you, seventy percent of the people that would have purchased that building would have put lipstick on a pig. This building is gutted, we applied for the permits, and we're gonna make it beautiful. And, and if there's a certain color that works with our thing, we're gonna work with the town. We want it to work. This is our home.
So any board comments at this point?
I just want one quick comment, I appreciate the comment from the proponent, and I think this will definitely be in good addition to the town, at the same time, it is our job to make sure things are done right, we just can't go by that it's going to be nice. I do think that as much as the word seems to be that it's not in the historic district, that should be checked prior to anything going on, just to make sure, because if it is in the historic district, it's gonna open up new things to go after, so that has to be checked before any approval is done, I believe.
Mr. Jemian?
Yeah.
So I did take a look at the historical district map, and it falls outside of the the boundaries.
Right, I just, I just, I assumed that it did, but I just want to make sure, but to make a formal.
I, and I agree, I agree, a hundred percent.
Mr. Jemian, are you, are you done, I'm sorry, do you have more to say, Mr. Jemian?
Not really, I think, I think based on Mr. Antonero's comments, I think that the engineering is important in that it can be worked out. I do, the one thing I would think we should do is that that fence should go up as the place was being built, the fence should be put up as the building is being converted.
Mr. Silva, you'll update the plans to show that currently, you know, the existing conditions are ninety percent coverage, and you're not exceeding the ninety percent coverage?
Yes, we, we will make that change, we'll add that section of fencing, will the roof drain details? Any adjustment to the roof recharge for groundwater mounding? Basically, all the comments that were indicated tonight, the only thing that I'm not clear on is whether or not we will or will not show fifteen foot poles or not.
Well, I, what do we require, do we have a pole height, Mr. Antonero or Mr. Romulus, under strict site plan, or do we not? That, that pole height's in a special permit criteria for mixed use, but do we have a pole height for, I mean, twice, I have no idea, I have no reference point, it's twenty feet too high.
So what I'm gonna do is, just so you know, I'm gonna have the electrical supply house come out to the property. That's what we did when we requested the specs on the light. So I'll have the electrical supply house come out and give us, give us specifics on the lighting for a fifteen foot and a twenty foot.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll get the specs on that. And, and I would hope that if it's the twenty foot, the board would realize that, you know, these are professionals saying that this is workable and this should be here, but I'll get whatever they, what they say, and I'm gonna go between the fifteen and twenty, and if there's no difference, we have no problem going with the fifteen.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is, and I don't know the answer to this, that's why I'm, if Mr. Antonero or Mr. Romulus know lighting. So, so the only reference I have for lighting in the mixed, in the central business district is the zoning requirement in mixed use, which is the special permit, which this is not falling under, it's fifteen feet with a ninety cutoff, is there any zoning requirement, any for lighting height, other than that? That they, is it fifteen townwide, or is it just fifteen in the special permit criteria, I guess, because if zoning goes to a certain height, it doesn't matter if it's better or not.
As long as it doesn't shed on others.
Yes, so. Yes, Mr. Chairman, what, what Mr. Silva was saying, like, it's basically, as long as it's not, there's no glare, it's adhering to kind of dark sky, you know, shining down on the property as opposed to adding to light pollution, then it's okay. Because it's not a special permit, they don't have the, the height requirements.
All right, how does the board want to proceed?
Could I just ask one more question?
Sure, Mr. Grant.
The building department had said that the fire escape on the right-hand side goes to a window, and that was, it's supposed to go to a door.
I think that'll have to be, that'll be picked up on the building permit side, I would think.
Okay, all right.
Existing anyway. So it autumn, that fire escape already goes to a window.
But it's supposed, he said a door, so.
Right, but it's, I don't know if it's grandfathered in, if he requests it to be a door, we're gonna put in a door, I mean, it's ultimately what he says goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and a door versus a window, I mean, we'll put the door in. I, you know, my, my feeling is I want everybody to be safe, and if he says it's safe for a back door, I want a door, not a window.
Mr. Chair, I think Ms. Rojas had a comment.
I'm sure I can't see her, I'm sorry, Ms. Ross, go ahead.
So, I, I know that the applicant has asked or mentioned a few times that you have other locations that you've built, and I just wanted to know what those locations were, since you were.
So we haven't built, we have rehabbed, so if you go to four seventy-eight, four eighty-four, four eighty-six Main Street, both of those houses when we purchased them were drug houses.
Okay, so they're homes, all right.
They're, they're fully functional, three and four families, we've worked with the fire department, we've worked with the building department, they're beautiful buildings now, we've rehabbed them inside, you know, for the most part, for the units that we could. And they're wonderful buildings, and there's no, if you look at the police report between three years ago and now, there's nothing. If you look at the police report back then, it was a drug house between both houses. And we got rid of all of that, and it's, I mean, like I said, we're in the town. Personally, we have fifty rental units between Bridgewater, East Bridgewater and Taunton. So the rental industry is not something new to me, I've been doing it for the past twenty-five, thirty years. I, I don't have the intentions of, and I know that this is a big concern for a lot of people. We're in the college town, this is the college area, and I totally get it. I don't really have the intentions of renting to college students here. This is more in, in, in my units over at Main Street. Like I said, I've been doing this for twenty-five, thirty years, this is my business.
So, we have, Mr. Rojas, was that your only question, I'm sorry, I don't want to.
Because, you know, she wanted to highlight that, so I thought that it was worth.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we had some board comments and questions, we have some engineering things we're waiting to get resolved and plans updated. Mr. Jemian, I know you made, you wanted to see some color schemes, is this something we want to wrap up tonight, is this something we want to get the plans updated on the engineering side and get the conditions done? Just do it at our next meeting in February, how do we want to proceed?
It seems to me that as much as the things that have to be resolved are not serious issues, at the same time, I think it would be worth going to the next meeting and making sure that the engineering is satisfactory to Mr. Antonero, and maybe we can also decide then, you know, what the color scheme will look like, and, and then go forward with it at the next meeting.
And, Mr. Dankwitz?
What color scheme are you looking for?
Something that fits the neighborhood.
Okay. I guess I've already indicated that whatever we're amicable to whatever, so I guess you want me to choose colors, I, I just want to make sure, so when I come to this next meeting, I have my ducks in line and say, okay, the building's gonna be beige with cranberry shutters, or whatever it may be, I just want to make sure it's, it's, is that what you want to know? What specifically do you want to know?
Mr. Jemian, do you want it narrowed down to like, we'll keep it?
I don't mean to nitpick this, I really don't.
No, I'm not saying that you do, I just need to know what you want.
It's just maybe present two or three different schemes to the, to Mr. Romulus, and they can go over things, and then we can decide at the next meeting.
Okay, so ultimately, I'm sorry, you know, I mean, like, honestly, I've spent a lot of money, I'm gonna spend a. I've spent a lot of money. I'm going to spend a lot of money. And I, I just, so I have to tell you, the town, I want two or three schemes and all of you get to say, okay, yes, we agree to these. And so I get to choose between the three schemes or do you choose?
You can propose, uh, Mr. Jemian, if I may, uh, Mr. Chair. I, I think if you can just propose like whatever you have in mind, just because right now it's, you know, black and white. Um, if it's like neutral or fits in with the character of the neighborhood.
You, you know, you know, the other thing we could even do, and this might make it easier, Mr. Jemian, is like sometimes towns will say, you know, you have to keep it within the Benjamin Moore historical colors.
So I guess that's what I'm asking. If you want me to choose from colors that you think will be worthwhile in that area, give them to me and let me choose. Because I don't want to come back and say, okay, obviously, I'm going to choose from the Benjamore style, but I don't want to choose these colors and then have somebody come back and say, no, those aren't cool. So give me a choice and I'll pick.
My own person.
Mr. Chairman?
I, I don't, I don't mean to, to make this into a big conversation. If you just present two or three to the economic and the, the office, to Mr. Romulus and yeah, and have them just look it over and maybe they can present the one to us. I'm sure it'll be fine, you know.
Okay, I, I just don't want to keep on going. That's all.
I don't either. I don't.
And I know that, and I know that, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to curtail the, the process. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Mr. Silver.
I don't want to belabor it either, but it's really her choice as to what she wants to do in terms of colors. There's no, really no restriction. She should just be proposing what it is that she wants to do and show that to you. So that's what you see. Um, I really don't think that there's any criteria that says that, uh, that the board gets to choose or the staff gets to choose, uh, what colors, uh, that she wants to do her building in. Um, I really don't think that that's anywhere within the regulations.
No, I agree, but we do ask for architectural renderings, which.
You ask for them so that you can see what's being proposed.
I'm not going to do lime green and purple. I promise.
You know, and, and I, I agree with Mr. Mr., you know, I think it's going to look very nice. I think the plan's nice. I think if we get, I mean.
You just need to see what it's going to be, that's all.
What I, what I, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to narrow it down to is Mr. Jemian, maybe we even say like, it comes from the, the historical colors from Benjamin Moore, that palette or something. So there's an array of colors you can choose from, but it's in that, that range, you know.
No, I appreciate that. I needed that. I needed that clarification. Thank you.
I would say it would be appropriate to be consistent with the historic district.
Agreed.
Okay.
So what else do we need? We need the colors.
So, so Mr.
The hole.
Mr. Mr. Um, Antonaro, so we, we need some plans updated with existing conditions and showing coverage. And then coverage now, we need the, um, drainage updated. Is that all stuff that you'd, you'd prefer to review before we move forward with a decision letter? Or is that something that the condition?
Yeah, so for example, the issue relating to, um, uh, the notes about removal and replacement, replacement of bacteria, that is pretty of a standard. He can just, the engineer can just spell out the, the elevations for that. That's not a problem. Uh, the issue, the comment about the 90%, I've just raised that so that you're aware of it. But given the nature of the project, I, I have no problem with it. Uh, the two items that really need to be resolved, it's, uh, the, the emergency overflow, how that would work and the, um, groundwater mounting.
Excuse me, the last part?
That would need to be reviewed. And if there's any significant change, then we'll, we need to resolve that with the board. So that of all the comments, the, those are the two real key issues. The groundwater mounting and the emergency overflow, those two items.
So, so, so the plans need to be updated to show the existing coverage, the proposed coverage, those two engineering items, lighting, um.
And color scheme.
Color scheme. And, and Mr. Romulus, so if we're not, if we're not under the special permit criteria, they can propose vinyl as opposed to natural materials, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, I would say I prefer a hottie plank, but if they decide vinyl, they decide vinyl, so.
And also the fence on the, on the side. So Chair, I was also going to bring that up also. If they, if they could show us the fence that they're going to propose to put up. Plus, I, I, you know, in the plans, they've also showed that they're going to, uh, they're going to fence in the, uh, the dumpsters, what, what kind of fencing that's going to be. I mean, fencing is things that we've talked about on other projects. You know, something that, and, and I, I would suggest, I mean, they, they don't have to. I'm looking at their west elevation and one of their notes is a 42-inch wood guardrails, uh, to meet code, you know. If they prefer to go to a, a more on maintenance versus wood rots and everything else, I mean, that it, it falls under the hottie plank versus vinyl siding, um, you know. It's up to them.
Understood.
Any other board comments? Everyone's quiet tonight. Um, any town staff comments? Mr. Romulus, do you think you could work with Mr. Silver to get the plans in before the next meeting and get a draft decision letter based on what we talked about tonight with the, and, and with the, you know, the conditions that, that we've discussed so far?
Yes, all of that is possible.
Thank you, Elijah.
No problem.
So do we?
The next meeting.
Well, so do we have a, um, any more discussion on this or any more feedback for the applicant?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, the only feedback I have, uh, again, relates to that groundwater mounting. Uh, so that it needs to be, in order to move things forward and along, that needs to be resolved, uh, prior to that next meeting, so that we are not having that conversation at that next meeting.
Okay.
In that, okay, because that's an important calculation. It needs to be addressed fairly quickly so that if there are any issues, we can resolve that so that we're not having the conversation at the next meeting.
Okay, and Mr. Silver, you'll connect on that.
Larry, you good with that?
Fine with that.
Thank you.
Alright, so if there's no other comments, um, I think our next meeting is on February 17th.
That is correct.
And Mr. Door, is that, is there anything even scheduled for that meeting yet or not yet?
Nothing, nothing scheduled.
So, um, unless there are additional comments or feedback for the applicant, somebody could make a motion to continue to February 17th, if they'd like.
I'll make a motion to continue, um, Summer Street to February 17th at 6:30.
I'll second that.
So we're going to continue 14 Summer Street, um, to February 17th at 6:30.
Perfect.
Second by Michael. Any discussion on that? Okay, uh, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we took care of, um,
The minutes.
The minutes. Mr. Romulus or Mr. Antonaro, under staff and directors reports, do you guys have any for us?
Uh, we do not have anything.
Mr. Antonaro?
Uh, the only thing I have is, uh, stay safe and be careful and.
Bye, Azu.
Great, well, thank you, everybody. Have a great night, thank you.
We have to vote for adjournment.
Oh, I'm sorry. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Bye, Mrs. McDonald. Bye, Mrs. Green. Any discussion? So, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night.